So we're going to bring the Berlin Select Board meeting of January 22nd to order. And first, we are going to have an executive session. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
I so move you go into executive session.
Seconded.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Keef, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
Stone, aye.
Should you say what we're going into executive session for?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Say the spiel.
Executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, police union.
Thank you.
And we'll return to open session after further conduct, to further conduct its regular business meeting.
Great.
Okay.
We're now in the executive session.
So we're back from executive session, and we're going to continue with our business in this meeting, which is, the first thing is approval of minutes for October, uh, October, January 8th. Wait, go ahead.
I was fine with the minutes on January 8th. I move through approved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, hearing nothing else, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And next thing is general public comment.
I'm going to surprise everybody.
Oh, all right.
We actually have some public comment.
Yes.
I have a request, kind of a around the water cooler discussion. There's been a lot of talk about some studies. I know right now there are three, UMass facilities and Rail Trail are all talking studies. So I'm going to use the UMass for an example. Is there any chance the Select Board could at some point let people know what's happening with those studies? You know, are there steps being taken to address the information that's come back?
Good point.
Everyone was wondering, and just one of those, like I said, sit around and talk, the UMass study, you know, we got a
Right.
We got a nice list of the information collected, but what's being done with that? You know, we paid for it. What's, what's happening? So I was just wondering if the Select Board could at some point just kind of touch base for the residents on what's happening.
We could probably put that on an agenda to discuss.
Sure.
Okay.
Can you just take an address, please? Sue, Karen.
Combs, Tom.
218, Linda. And now there won't be public comments for another six years. Thank you for breaking the silence.
Thanks for breaking the ice.
Good job.
All right, well Kristin and I will discuss this at our agenda setting meeting, which is every Thursday, just about every Thursday. All right, anything else? All right then, we're going to move on to our public hearing, which has been continued for an application for transfer of liquor license, AK Liquors Incorporated, doing business as Berlin Wine and Spirits from Dagnaults Liquors, 264 West Street in Berlin.
And we do actually have to continue that. Again, there were some tax issues that needed to be addressed in order to get the certificate of good standing that is required to move forward. I believe, Dee, we're going to do the February 5th meeting for that to make sure we don't have to continue to continue it.
Continue to continue it?
Yes.
All right, then, and that would be at what time?
Seven.
Yeah, seven works.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah.
I move we continue the public hearing, electric license transfer to February
5th.
5th. At seven o'clock.
Seconded.
Okay, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So we're right, actually, what's our
This is why I sometimes put things on at the same time.
Yeah, because you can have to do it at the same time.
So now we've got the Economic Development Committee. Peter?
Karine's going to come up with me as well. She's an EDC member.
Okay, come on up.
So, I'm going to talk a little bit, and Karine, the brains of the operation, she's going to talk a lot, or more than me. Won't be more than 20 minutes, Chris, so don't worry.
Just with the cameras on, for people who might not know, when you start talking, just say who you are, so that they get the names.
Want me to say who I am?
Yes, I know who you are, but people who are watching.
I was pulling your leg.
Yeah.
Anyway, so I'm Peter Hoppin, 183 Randall Road, Chair of the EDC. I'm going to talk about the sign update, and Karine will talk about four other things, which she'll bring up in a moment. We've identified another, another sign site, which is the white fence at the Indulge Pet, Indulge Pet on 62.
Okay.
And I've cleared the site with the owner and the tenant, they're different. And I talked to Fred, thumbs up, and our sponsor tentatively is Berlin General Store Ed, which I've yet to develop, but that's, that's really all there is to update unless you have questions or thoughts.
Questions, thoughts?
Similar to the one on the other side of town. Welcome to Berlin.
Exactly.
So we'll come back to us for the agreement once everything is all worked out?
Yeah, exactly.
Great.
So for now, we'll go back to the Planning Board, get them to bless it if they will, and then we'll come back to you, get you to bless it if you will, and comply with your request.
And I have had no phone calls about that sign over by the garden.
Not even good ones?
None, so I guess no news is good news.
I like it.
Right?
Personally, I think it looks very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So similar, just agreement likely structured similarly?
Exactly. It should be a do, but the same.
Perfect.
So that should be pretty much it. Karine's got two EDC things and two personal things to bring up.
Sort of EDC as well, but they'll be quick.
Okay.
And my hand is shaking because you make me nervous.
As it should be.
I'm sitting this seat over here.
She gets the, at least, you know, your handshake, she gets the glare on that, on that side of the table.
My whole body shakes.
So Karine, it's all yours.
All right, I'm Karine Gustafson, 188 Highland Street. So we've been talking about, the EDC has been talking, and the Energy Committee has been talking about getting a electric vehicle charger in somewhere in the downtown area. So I've looked into it, I know Tim is looking into it, Kristin, nice to meet you, we've been emailing.
Nice to meet you, yes.
And so I have some costs, I have some ideas, I've talked to somebody who's going to come and do a site visit, I know somebody else has also contacted the Energy Committee. So there's a lot of, you know, we've been looking into it, but before we go too far, spend a lot of time on this, we kind of wanted to get, you know, see how you guys felt about it before we go too far, and is there interest in it? Should we continue to look into it?
Let me add one thing, so there's two sites that we have in mind, or the town offices here, and, what's the street?
Woodward.
Woodward, thank you. Woodward Street, it's a low traffic, high parking area, it's downtown. So getting your temperature is the first thing, because we, if you all are opposed to it, makes no sense for us to suspend wheels, and if you are supportive, we've got lots of homework to do and can't answer many questions, but we'll try.
Would it be on the street, on Woodward Ave?
We thought about the border between Lover Company and the General Store. There's a telephone pole right there, but nobody's too interested in that, because there's not enough parking as it is. But the electricity's good.
But both sites do the pole that's there, both sites have a transformer, and so that makes the wiring easier, installing it easier. National Grid pays 100% of their costs to install it, there's grants, of course, which covers a lot. So one quote that I got so far, I don't know how much information you want upfront, but they're like 60,000 to 80,000 full cost, but then with grants and everything, it comes down to about 15,000 to 20,000, depending on, like if the town wants to do some of the work, like put up bollards and signs, that reduces our cost for getting it put in there, so, and that would be for one, level three DC fast charger, which I think in this day and age is really where you want to go. And anybody heading towards Clinton, you know, there's a, you know, there's charging stations up at Highland Commons, but everybody going west, they're coming to Berlin, maybe they'll stop, and so that's sort of our idea, is that coming from the EDC point of view, anyway.
And I feel that 20, 15,000 or 20,000 per unit for us to spend is way too much. Where we'll, where we'll end up, who knows, but I think that's way too much.
And it does produce some revenue.
We have talked about putting in charging units when we redid the parking lot here, but I don't think that we were prepared to do it at the time.
I like the idea of it here, I think if that's something that, you know, the EDC and Energy Committee are amenable to, that, that's a, that's a good spot. I would think, you know, we're talking, we did put in a grant for complete streets for the downtown area, if you will, that goes Carter to Woodard, all around the, I always think of it as a common, because it is a traditional common, but it's not the common. So that would actually improve walkability and create some pedestrian spaces and fix sidewalks. So I, the only thing, timing wise, if we were going to do Woodward, I would want to wait, I think, until we saw if we got that grant, because it's going to completely reconfigure and pave. It's a half a million dollar grant, that actually the town would then match with paving on top of that from Chapter 90 funds, so.
Is any of that half a million available for individual uses? Would it be available for the electric charger?
No, it's all specific to, it's the complete streets grant, you had to do a prioritization plan, which the Planning Board did back in 2016, and it's very specific, from everything I know, to pedestrian and bicycles. I can certainly reach out to the consultant and ask, we didn't put in the grant, because I didn't see anywhere that it was electronic charging, that there was a component for that, but I can certainly ask the question.
Sure, couldn't hurt. But I just don't, I think it's unjustified for the townspeople to pay for other people's cars.
Maybe some of the, I'm trying to think of the grant funding, we did two in Lester, one at the library and one at the town hall, and it ended up costing us more like 5,000. We used a company called Voltrex that did it and matched with a grant, and it was, it was pretty cost effective, and then we were able to create a revolving fund that offset the annual, you know, some of the fees for electricity with the charges that come in, because obviously it increases your electricity bill a bit, but it wasn't significant, and then we could offset it with what you charge for the vehicles for charging there.
Well, it's pay as you go, with a credit card or app.
And there was a, there was a grant, a Massachusetts Energy Grant, which you could apply for to help fund all of this, and unfortunately, the window's closed for that, applying to that.
Okay.
But the forecast is that they're going to open it up again, and so I'm on the emailing list, so if, if and when they do open it up, hopefully I'll get notified, so we'll be aware of it and not miss the window in the future when it does open up. So that might have accounted for part of like, what I've heard of the cost just recently and what you've heard.
Sure. I mean, I'd be very happy to help.
I would love to explore just putting in a charger, not having it part of one of the charging networks with a revenue stream, because you can go and buy from, you know, electrician, just a level three charger and have it installed for something close to, again, that $2,500 to $3,000 range. Now because of that, because it's not in a network, because there's not an app, there's no revenue source, but the amount of revenue you're going to get over five years is not going to be $10,000. And so, you know, and if you don't have, you're not part of the network, you don't have their annual fees, you don't have the software fees, you don't have as much upkeep fees. And so I think you might want to explore just, and, and those free ones, you can still like, oh, the apps, okay, but there are apps that list where sort of free general chargers, because I have driven a bunch, I only own electric cars, I've driven a bunch of them using the sort of standard chargers that are at town offices in several places in Maine and New Hampshire to get through. And they work, just the sort of same thing as I have in my garage, that, again, the only cost, a couple thousand to put in, doesn't have revenue, but doesn't have the cost.
Who pays for the electricity?
Town would have to pay for the electricity.
That could be significant, yeah.
I don't think it would, I don't think it's as significant as you think it's going to be.
I mean, if it's unlocked, and who, who could use it? Anyone?
Anyone could use it, but if it's one charger, anyone could use it one car at a time, that has, is generally there with the car as it's happening. And I think if it's, especially if it ends, well, if there was actually one of the town offices, our own vehicles could end up using it in town.
I think it is relatively low, from what I remember.
Yeah.
Compared to what we thought it was going to be, like, it wasn't even significant in some cases, I think the first year, we didn't have the ability to set up the revolving fund initially, because it had to go to town meeting, and we were worried that the electricity charges were going to be through the roof, and they really were minimal compared to what the overall electricity use already is for the building. And then there was, I think we put about 5,000 a year into that revolving fund for software, the maintenance contracts and the warranties, which you also have to pay for on those items, so you may have a point.
So if we find an electrical contractor, doesn't he or she have to be prevailing wage and so forth?
Not if they're a sole proprietor. If they're with a company, yes. If they're an individual, no.
So Tim, did you have something?
They have to be insured and all.
But even at prevailing wages, that's not a lot of, not a lot of extra money.
Tim?
May I be recognized?
Sure.
Tim Weissaki, I'm the Chair of the Energy Committee, I thought I'd add a little bit of color commentary, because we've been working on this as well. We have also been in contact with another vendor who has a slightly different model than what was described, and that would be a town owned model, where they would be our agent, they would work through the operational piece, install all that, but the town would actually be the purveyor of the service. So to your point, Peter, yes, we would pay for the electricity, but we would also pay for, or we would also receive the revenue. So they would do it as a, basically a service to install it, there would be an ongoing service contract that we would be in, but then at that point, we're basically set up as our own provider system. So there would be, of course, a credit card charge associated with, basically like any other business. So the vendor that contacted us is out of Upstate New York, we've been working with Kristin, Karine, I've been on those two. And they have also identified, actually not Woodward, but they were on the other side on Highland, so they're looking in the same place as well as the, here, as the municipal office buildings. From the Energy Committee's standpoint, we are looking at this as infrastructure to enable the town to eventually migrate to battery electric vehicles as part of green communities and potentially the also, also the program that is coming up through the state, which is Sustainable Communities, which is kind of the successor from Green Communities. That would be something that we would like to do. So we, when we spoke in the Energy Committee, we put them over to Woodward Avenue. Reason being is, if you recall, when we did 1870 Town Hall, we had to upgrade a significant amount of power, probably maybe a little too much power for the elevator, that leaves additional capacity at the pole, so we feel that that's a good location as well. So we're fully supportive of this effort, we want to make sure that we're in alignment with the two boards, we're not doing too, because so far, there hasn't been a problem, but that's how the Energy Committee views this proposal.
Great, great.
So we'll collaborate.
Okay, that, that sounds good.
We'll come back to you when we have something to tell us and to report.
Oh, that's great, that's good.
All right.
Is that it?
No.
No, no, there's other topics, go ahead.
Next item, yes. So Berlin is one of the only towns around that doesn't have an annual Fund 5K, and I proposed it to the EDC, because it's a great opportunity for local businesses to advertise. It brings people into the town, it puts Berlin on the map. It's a fun thing for locals and everybody around to participate in. It's not meant to cost anything, it's self sustaining, it brings its own revenue in, it just needs somebody to organize it. I'm volunteering to be that person, because I have some experience in that area, and so I wanted to see if there was any interest, I can certainly look into it if there is. If not, I, I go to lots of other towns and do races, so, but I, it would be nice if Berlin had something.
We have bike races that come through town, you know, at least once a year, we get a request for somebody to come through town, so.
Right, but it's not town focused, I think, right? You're talking about something that's specifically sort of for the town, like
Town sponsored.
Yeah, town sponsored, yeah.
Yes, annual Berlin Fund 5K, walk run, you know, for families, strollers, runners, that sort of thing. And if you market it and tie it to something, I don't know, apple picking season, for example, where people are coming into town anyway, and this is something the families get involved in, people who do the race, they bring their friends, then they come year after year, it becomes a thing. And like I said, it's, you know, it's not a, it's not a big thing, it doesn't really cost any, it doesn't cost the town anything, hopefully that's the plan, is to make it self sustaining, so.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds like a great idea.
I would be fair for that, yeah.
Yeah.
I think if you wanted to, if through the Chair, come back with a date or a proposal for, you know, how it would work, the Select Board can sign off on use of the roads, so that's what you would, just need the annual approval, is what, you know, you folks sign off on, and I think it sounds like a really neat idea.
Great, okay.
That's great.
I did also, I thought I should loop in the REC Committee.
Yeah.
And I did email them, but I haven't got a response yet, so I'm just, but I did, I didn't want to step on anybody's toes if somebody else wants to do this, but I'm offering if there is interest, so.
That's great.
Do I think, do I have time, I don't want to
Go for it.
All right, so another idea that some local runners came up with, and I also saw on the Berlin Facebook page, that people, local runners, look for places to run that aren't on the roads, it's not safe. And one subject that came up was a possible, a dirt track around the BMS property, the grounds, the fields, the tennis courts, whatever the perimeter could be, the biggest, something not, not expensive like a running track like at Tejano, but a packed dirt path that strollers, walkers, runners could go on, you know, if a sibling is playing a soccer game, you know, another child could be riding their bike with training wheels, and they're not on the roads, they're close by, they're safe, that's sort of the thinking. Something inexpensive, one of my running friends suggested, you know, what if you put in, built in some workout stations on the track? And I said, well, who would do that and who would pay for that? And so my running friend suggested, well, what about the Boy Scouts? They could learn some skills, build the stations, do this long term project like nothing has to be done tomorrow, just make it sort of something that they could earn a badge, work on a station. If any local businesses wanted to sponsor some materials to build stations, they could get a plaque to advertise. So that's sort of the EDC angle of it, that was.
Kristin, do you know, or does anybody know, whether something like that, if we were to put in something like that, if it would be, you know, have, be required to be ADA accessible and all those kinds of things?
I'm just thinking that, sadly, I think that exact idea was at town meeting recently, like, like, three or four years ago, not like recently.
Wasn't it with proper, proper covering? It wasn't just a dirt track?
Yeah, it was.
And it was costly?
Right, it was costly, because again, on, on land that the town owns, you, there will be state and federal laws that we have to make sure that the trail upholds to.
Who's the, who's the expert on that, that Karine can speak with?
Talk with REC, because they had proposed this several years ago.
Right, because it was their idea.
And unfortunately, they, you know, one, their proposal came in and said it was a dollar, and then when they went out and did the actual work, it was like, holy moly, it's $20.
Right.
But I think that they may have some of the, probably the preliminary things that you could work off of.
Yeah.
So, you know, when you're reaching out to them about
They may have more answers than we do.
Yeah, when you're reaching out to them about the 5K, they may have some skinny to share with you on the track around.
That makes sense, because I remember, like, it passed town meeting, but ended up not happening, because it ended up being like twice as much as town meeting had it, even the proponents like were.
And was it like, you know, what material they're talking?
No, I don't remember, it wasn't super long, it wasn't super long ago.
It would have to be a certain material to be ADA accessible, and that's probably what, what the whole deal was.
Would Julie have that? Julie or, or, yeah, it'd be Julie Lee, who's the current, well, no, Felicia's the Chair, but Julie Lee, she was part of that REC Committee that may do that, so.
I can connect you up with her.
I don't even know if it was REC Committee.
Yeah, because I did say
The one he's talking about.
It was great to know, because you're a promoter.
I'll give you an introduction.
All right, that'd be great.
That's sarcastic.
The last one's the most entertaining.
It'll be short. Again, a few people have brought this up, and I'm just speaking on behalf, make, to make the downtown area a little bit more visitor, visitor friendly, maybe having a porta potty somewhere accessible in non-winter months would be a good thing for a lot of people, I think. People who are outdoors enjoying the beautiful Berlin area. So that was it, I'm done, thanks.
What's your, this is a, that's a Karine idea, not an EDC idea, but what's your reaction?
I like it, I mean, you'd probably have to talk with the people from the church, because I'm thinking that that's where everything would need to sit, so get their permission, their thoughts on picnic tables and costs, and like, who's picking up the trash, and does it fall to a highway to pick up everybody's lunch after they go to the General Store? Chuck it, but.
Right, I like it, because there are, they're not always open, but I mean, the library in 19 Carter, 1870 Town Hall, the church, and the General Store all have restrooms. Does the General Store have a restaurant?
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
And sometimes people who are out hiking, or biking, or walking, or running, don't always want to go into a place and feel like they're imposing.
Right, and, and 19 Carter's only open so many hours, 1870 Town Hall's only open so many hours, I get some of that, too, but.
But I think that there's options for you, I think, well, I mean, it kind of falls in with the whole complete streets, if we're going to do that, then might as well make it pretty.
Are there, are there porta potties in the summer on South Commons? I thought there were.
On South Commons?
South Commons, because of the games.
Okay, okay, but you're talking about downtown.
Somewhere more central.
Gotcha.
So would, is this be something that you'd like Karine to look into, or not so much?
I'm for it, I, I will never poo poo an idea without information. Oh, that was not a pun, that was not, I'm sorry about that, that was not an intended pun. I will never reject an idea without information that tells me that I should.
Yeah, I think, on the face, it has some, definitely some potential. I'd love to hear what the people, the business, the center of town think, and especially the church where it likely sit, but there are definitely a lot of outdoor events that happen in the summer around the center. If it helps get more people there and support things, that's a good idea.
And some research, I think, on the cost, because obviously, especially in the summer, you want to have that cleaned regularly, that would be helpful, too.
Yeah, and that's something I've seen in a lot of areas now, as I'm out in the mountain places, they're everywhere now, and I don't know who pays for them, who puts them up, but they're very much appreciated by anybody who's out, if you're out with your kids, you know.
Do anything, go ahead.
You want to be able to go out and not have to rush in to find someplace, so.
Awesome. Okay, thanks for all the great ideas.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Good luck, keep us posted.
You're the best.
You're the best.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Tim, for your information on the, well, on that.
Can I make a suggestion? Could we do the poll?
Yeah, that's all I can ask, yes.
Are you on the same
Yep. Oh, okay, yep. So we're going to move things around a little bit and do the public hearing for the National Grid poll petition.
We didn't forget about you, gentlemen, we'll be right back to you.
So this one is at Powers Road, at Randall Road?
Yes, I believe we have a representative here from National Grid.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thanks. Yeah, hi, my name is Javier Morales, I'm here representing National Grid. I'd like to request from the Board of Selectmen, the approval, one brand new poll location, located 300 feet from the intersection of Coburn Road. The new poll will be numbered 24-50, and it will feed in along Powers Road, Power Road, to one new residential home, to provide service for that residence.
Questions, comments?
Questions from the audience, perhaps?
I'm, yep.
Oh.
So, questions of the audience? No?
Okay.
Uh, I'm willing to make the motion that we, uh, support the added poll on Coburn Road.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Clear?
Easiest meeting you've been to all week.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Just saying.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to back up to the General Department update, police and fire.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to close the, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, so moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Did you call her Mary?
I said, thank you.
Oh, I thought you said Mary.
This sounded Mary, D, Mary.
Sounds it, all right.
I could be losing it, it's possible.
All right. So we have our police and fire here, uh, to give us a third-floor renovation presentation.
Come on down.
I just feel like saying the phrase is right.
That's right.
Oh, look at you.
Look at this, we have handouts, additions to the stuff that we have in the packet. There's like notes on it.
Holy crap.
So I have one big set of drawings here and stuff that you're welcome to look at and see. So this pretty much, this incorporates the renovations above public safety that we're looking at, that we were hoping to use some ARPA money to try to accomplish for some additional space for fire and police, and unfortunately, the price tag came back much higher than we were all anticipating. Uh, this report is from a, um, architect's, uh, design service that we had used. Um, it kind of came in, and as you read through that, it just goes through, it talks about, you know, the building, the space, you know, what we have, what's there, um, and kind of what's needed for the project. Um, there, there is a cost that goes into that that kind of explains how it's broken out and, um, using, um, the, uh, the wages and stuff, where the price kind of came from for, and it's everything from moving HVAC systems, electrical plumbing. Um, and the idea is the, the dormitories that would be built up there, I believe there are 10, uh, dormitories that are put up there in there with a kitchen, um, kind of a dining kitchen area that's all open in one, um, with a, uh, there's kind of a, a couple offices for police and fire that are up there as well, um, and a, uh, kind of a, a day room is what we call it, um, that has a TV and some couches and stuff and, and stuff for the crews. Um, and that day area, kitchen area, is a combination of police and fire, uh, area and stuff for the crews to be able to do shift exchanges, to be able to have meals and to be able to have a place to, to sit. Towards the back of the packet, there is a couple of, uh, there, there's drawings that kind of explain to you the layout of the building as it sits currently, um, and then there's a couple drawings of, or renditions of what the second floor would actually look like up there. Um, and all of those are kind of incorporated into the price plan, there's not one that, it, it doesn't change with whichever one we choose, um, or if we were to move forward with the project, but it gives you a general layout of how that's going to work down the middle of the building, um, because the sides that kind of go towards the dormer or the building and stuff are the, the areas that we probably wouldn't be able to use too much just the way the roof structure kind of falls in that area. And from that, it's just a matter of, uh, we have, you know, kind of, obviously, we don't have the money to do this currently. Um, we did speak with Dennis, is the name of the architect, you know, to kind of get a general build-out of where we were going to be with this and where to move forward to make it a project or shovel-ready. And I didn't actually print off that email, but it first, my memory serves me, I was about on the $60,000 for them to be able to finalize that, to get it to a point that would be at that level.
Yes. And if I may add some somewhat unfortunate news, um, I was at the MMA conference over the weekend where the governor unveiled her FY25 budget proposals that did not include the municipal buildings fund. So the, um, small, I went to the STAM luncheon, which is a Small Town Administrators, um, Association, and I spoke with a lot of town administrators who were very disappointed in this, and I think that they're going to go hard to get that back in the proposal. There were a lot of very good things in the proposal, but that was one that didn't seem to make it in.
Okay.
So, um, I, you know, just wanted to put that, that out there, um, and also that we did ask for perhaps a second opinion.
Yep.
On cost, um, Anna Karine, uh, has someone who is an architect that has expressed possible willingness to take a look at the numbers, so we're going to go that route as well. Um, but, uh, we're in a bit of, I think, a holding pattern because of that. However, in realization with budget season starting and everything, that we didn't bring this forward to the board so you at least had an understanding. I think we had to get over the sticker shock of it, which took us a couple of months. Um, you know, wanted to be able to give you that understanding of what we were looking at.
So Chief, is an A, an B, and a C for the attic floor? I'm assuming A is most expensive, B middle, C littler?
Yeah, I believe that the way that he broke that down is correct.
And if money were no option, I'm assuming that you'd lean towards option A?
Yeah, I think if money was no option, to kind of just get the space done and accounted for and stuff and complete everything, um, kind of, is, we kind of looked at it like, one of the things we talked about was trying to do this in phases, um, and one of the biggest things that prevents us from being able to do phased in up there to be usable is the staircase to get to the second floor, uh, if you will, from the fire station goes right through the only dormitory I currently have for my staff. Um, so the, it was kind of one of those things, okay, how do we make this work so that at the end, and kind of phase it in and cut back, and it was really difficult to come up with anything. So, and I think, you know, just looking forward with the cost of everything, and the costs are only going to go up as we go forward, um, that, that would be why, if money was no object, that, that is the way that I would go.
Any other questions for these fellows?
If we went forward with a, I, I think, did I hear right about $60,000 to get this sort of as a shovel-ready sort of status?
Yeah, that was his, uh, that was basically, he came back with a cost estimate for that so that if we had the funding that was given to us, we could pull the trigger and, and the plan would literally be handed to somebody to go ahead.
How, how long would that plan be good for? If we put together shovel-ready, because rules and regulations around fire suppression and, and being able to stay, change all the time?
Yeah. That, that's a good question, that answer I don't have.
Or, or even like, if it was shovel-ready, like, and two years from now we wanted to go back to it, how much more would it cost to take that and just tweak it to current code? Because we have the, we have the $60,000 in ARPA already sort of set aside.
Correct.
And, and I think it might be, by personally, it might be worth starting, going down that path, so if the governor does change, it also puts in a spot for potentially other funding out there.
That's correct, I, and I agree, and I, I've seen plans, they tend to go stale after about two years.
Yep.
Um, but they can be dusted off for pretty inexpensively because you already have the architectural plans, building code in two years isn't going to change that drastically, you're going to need the cost estimates updated, or is the primary.
Yes, yep.
Um, piece. So maybe you can speak to Dennis and just ask him what the cost estimate would be to update those plans, um, and what the shelf life is.
Yep.
That would be helpful.
And if, if there's interest from the three of you, I can also bring before you, if you have questions specific for him that he can answer for you, I think he'd be more than happy to come in to speak to you about it and be able to answer those questions for you as well.
Sure.
But I can certainly find out how long, you know, by, if you're going down that road once it's at that shovel-ready project, how long we have on that before it's going to have to change, or we'll have to put more money into it to keep it at that point.
Well, you got to my question, just could we do this in phases? And you explained exactly why that doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
I get that part.
Yep.
And we did a great little tour after our Capitol meeting one night, um, with a couple Capitol members to see that the office space for the fire department is set up really well, if you haven't been down there recently, or if you have, there's just not living space. Um, there's the one room with the two beds and the two chairs, and we're talking especially about, um, and this was talked a lot about this weekend, was DEI, um, and this is becoming a huge thing, diversity, equity, um, and inclusion, and making sure that we offer spaces that are livable, um, inhabitable, so we can attract, um, all folks of all backgrounds and generations and walks of life. So, um, it's very easy to ask, it's hard to ask people to share a room and not have adequate space. I think also the evidence room, um, upgrades that are coming down as part of the accreditation that you've been working on, and, uh, potential upgrades, I think in 2027, if that accreditation becomes mandated, is something we're going to have to look at as well. So there are definitely some long-term needs there, or short-term needs, rather.
Yeah.
So on options A, B, and C, um, if we look at C, which we'll call, or I'll call, for lack of better words, bare minimum, um, is it adequate enough for sleeping areas and stuff for Eric, you know, to put his, um, you know, storage or evidence room in there? I mean, if we only, if we only had $20 to spend, um, because everyone likes Pegmat, if we only had $20 to spend, would Plan C meet the basic minimum requirements for both your departments?
What is D and E?
I mean, it's debatable. I mean, we'd have to really sit down and have a big roundtable discussion about this, you know? I mean, I would say probably move some walls and, you know, whatnot. I mean, remember, this is just an architect coming in.
Right.
Off of our ideas, and like, I know he, like, when I look at what he did for PD, I'm kind of like, yeah, no, see, just we need a secluded space, we can't have open hallways into the fire station and, and, and general sleeping quarters and stuff, so, you know, we do need to be a locked facility, but, yeah, I mean, it's definitely manageable, I mean, we're not adding any more walls or stairways or anything, so I think we'll be within the cost.
I mean, I don't want to script on cost, but I'm saying, if we only had $20, what could be the design to make sure that both your departments were taken care of? So, not the Cadillac, but, you know, not a, not a, uh, Chevette either, you know, somewhere, somewhere in the middle.
Right.
Okay.
So there is a D and an E also, correct?
Yeah.
We thought about that, and I believe you had reached out to Assebit at one point?
I did. Assebit was, um, when I reached out to Assebit, they were willing to do work on this and stuff, but what they needed, they needed an actual plan that we needed to commit to in order to work off.
Yep.
And that's, and this is about as.
Take $2,000.
As far as we've gotten with them and stuff, you know, just trying to work through this and stuff and figure out if we're going to get that next step or not, um, and depending on what they have for projects, um, when I first started talking about this, it was, I believe it was probably in May or June of last year and stuff, and we were talking about trying to get it on the docket for the next year coming up, and I think at this point that their project load might be further out, so we're a couple of years from being able to do it. But I haven't circled back to them. Um, and option D and E, um, the, if you look at that, there is an actual, um, there's a staircase and an elevator on those that are on the exterior by the, uh, where the, uh, generator is, um, on the PD side, um, and those are the additions for that, that's actually going to cost a little bit more for those, um, to put in another means of egress or to put in that elevator that would exist there, and that would be for ADA access to the, to the second floor. Um, the one thing we don't have with this plan, um, is ADA access because of the way the elevator was done, we have the steps that kind of come up on the side over here, so there's no ramp to get up there, um, and the operations area of the fire department over there wouldn't really require ADA access because the employees would only be up there if they were actually able to perform the duties as a, you know, firefighter, police officer type of thing. Um, but in moving towards the future, we can look at putting a lift in or something like that, if we want to make it ADA compliant, to go from the apparatus, bloodbaiting it up there, that it would allow that to happen. Um, and that was one of the things that he had put in was just as a, a show on that for, uh, for D and E, is just to show what that would look like. Uh, but there would be, and I'm trying to remember how much more it would be for the elevator that he was talking about putting in there, which was going to be more of a lift, not a true elevator like we did at the 1870, but I think it was another $120,000, I think, for that, uh, to go in.
So then Eric, obviously, any types of interviews would happen on the first floor, so.
Well, yeah, you know, I mean, this is what allows us to, to be able to do that on the first floor. Yeah, we move, we move the evidence room upstairs, we move, uh, one of the offices upstairs and clean out one of the storage, you know, clean up a lot of the areas of storage.
All right, Mike, where's the poll?
It would end up going over by the staircase, um, that goes down to the first floor and stuff, we would actually end up having to put that in, uh, if you will, kind of off to the side of that. So there is one plan to, that will go in, um, is that will be the quickest way for them to get down. It's kind of like a dalmatian, you have to have one.
You have to have one.
I, I think this is great, uh, I would leave it to others, sort of the A, B, or C, and where that balance is between long-term cost of ownership and, and long-term use of the space and.
Yep.
And others, and, and I, I would, generally, I don't, we don't need to vote tonight on this, but because you already have some money set aside, moving to that $60,000, because that same shovel-ready for grant is also the document that Assebit's looking for, for them to do it.
Yep.
And I think if we had that documented, that would be good for a couple of years and gave it to them, and they said, yeah, two years, we can do it, suddenly, if the labor costs go down because we have the students doing it, this becomes something that's potentially doable out of free cash.
I mean, I think you're going to need to include a D or an A just for ADA access.
A what?
ADA access, so D and E, they're the ones that have the elevators or the lift. As Chief Mike said, it was a lift, so you're going to have to include one of those, otherwise you're going to build it and then you're going to have to come back and slap twice as much money on it because you forgot it, or jeez, we were skimping on costs.
We're skipping on cost, but that section building might not need to be ADA compliant. You don't do things up there that, that, again, if you have the interview room downstairs.
Yep.
Right, and one of the things with, um, some of the projects we did in the last batch of ARPA that we talked about was bringing back cost estimates to the board before we moved forward.
Yep.
Um, so, you know, before, I actually, I know you don't have to vote, but it might be nice to have a vote to move forward, uh, with the design plans, given the fact that there is the funding available to do so. Um, I think that, obviously, you want to get a little bit more information from Dennis, but provided that cost is reasonable, um, if the board is.
Isn't it going to be, isn't it going to be a little bit strategic about, you know, if they're going to last this long, the plans are going to last this long?
Yep.
Then you, you may want to wait till a certain point and then do them.
Right, the, the challenge is, what we're hearing on ARPA, um, is right now they want all contracts to be entered into by the end of 2024. The Lawrence Trahan's office and other legislators are pushing back on that. Initially, they said appropriated, now they want contracts signed, so we could still wait a little bit, but I just want us to move forward as much as we can.
Well, if that was the case, if you were doing it through ARPA, then yes.
Yeah, so that's where the money is set aside, um, for the, for the drawings, and I was trying to figure out how much money we had left, I can't seem to open the thing, after we took out the 52 for the cruiser. Oh, you've got it pulled up right there.
I don't know if the cruiser's on it or not, but.
Yep, I took the cruiser out.
I had that because of another mistake I made earlier this week, apparently, for.
Well, I think we need another column on this sheet, but that's okay.
Oh, I added another column, um, oh, it was it, oh, that's why I can't find it, I put it in the coffee talk file.
Oh, well, I have that one.
Sorry.
That's the one I.
But I just Googled ARPA, that's what comes up.
I have that one, but I was looking for another column to say, uh, we'll just, we'll just pick on one, where's the court, to say it was, you know, X dollars, X dollars has been spent, this money is available, unlike, right, but unlike that one where you have 180 there and it looks like we have 180 over here, but that's because we're pending stuff. And so I was looking for used, go ahead and use it, or it's earmarked, we don't have any costs on it yet, so don't touch it.
Right. Oh, that's the one I emailed out, that's why I couldn't find it, because it's in email. Losing my thought, I was losing my mind there.
So would you have to, so you know when you walk in the door of that ramp and walk in and there's a bunch of stuff over there on the left? Would that have to be all reconfigured? No, that stays as is. So, you don't have to touch it. So, you can basically build around it and then over there.
Yep. That plant, if you will, that's right there with the, with the HVAC system and stuff would all stay and they, they would start on the other side of that, kind of where, almost where I think that railing is now.
Yep.
Um, and just go down that way.
Okay.
That is too bad that the roof slopes because I'm sure you lose a lot of it if it wasn't, you know, if it was up.
Yeah, the dormer.
Yep.
There's 136,500 remaining because only 11,500 has been spent and the allocation was scaled back to 148 after the 52 was taken out for the cruiser.
And you're thinking about the, you were saying something about the, um, the, kind of like the MSBA for schools.
Yeah, it's, uh, unfortunately not in there at this time. Didn't quite make the cut.
That was one of the best reasons we went ahead, you know, with the building of schools.
Right. I mean, I think there's enough cities and towns that are gonna fight for it. I can't, you know, obviously guarantee that we're gonna get it. There's a lot of momentum.
Right. But that's what I was talking about. If, you know, getting designs done now.
Yes.
You know, you want to wait, you want to wait so that you can use those designs during the window when that would open.
I, I think so. And I, you know, I believe there's a lot of momentum around it. So, it would make sense to get those designs. Did Dennis give a sense of how long it would take to get those designs done?
He seemed to think it was relatively quick to get them done.
Okay. So, we could hold off for a bit if we needed to, or we could get them done.
I mean, this is something that we could probably put on the next week's agenda, even if you find out the answers.
We could.
So, we have 148 on Project 12.
Yep.
We've spent 11 and a half and we have 136 and a half for, for a true balance because the car is already down on Project 18. That money's already out, correct?
Correct. You got it.
Have you talked to your
Was that pig math or was that?
I was gonna say, did you find the spreadsheet or did you did that quick?
That was real math.
Good for you.
That was not, pig math rounds even. Just saying. So, you'll always know because it would have been 150 minus 12 minus 140.
No, and it was attached actually to that email I sent on the 15th called ARPA Funding, um, that, um,
So, have you talked to your folks about this? How do they feel?
They're, they're, they're kind of excited about it.
Yep.
Um, you know, just because it gives them the space and stuff. And I know, I, I have a few staff members now that are leery about being at the station at night, um, you know, just because of the way that bedroom is right now. Um, and they typically don't take shifts at night.
So, there'd be
So, you mentioned that you really don't use the, um, workout room downstairs. And I know that you had mentioned earlier that you have like a time for like when the tone goes off, people like dressed and on the truck and ready to go. Have you ever timed it out where if you got rid of the equipment downstairs, moved that upstairs, taken the stuff that's upstairs and gotten rid of it and put bedrooms in and stood outside the door with like an air horn and went to see how long it would take them to like, can you, you picture this in your mind when I'm doing it? I know you all are.
I know.
To like run out the door, run down the hall and then up the driveway?
Yeah, it's a, well, when we're down there, because we have our training room that's down there and stuff. So, like tonight, we were down there, we had a call that we had to respond on and stuff. So, it's, there, there's a delay, um, you know, by up to almost a minute to a minute and a half at times for them to be able to get upstairs, you know, to get into the fire station. And some of the things that go into that consideration is at night when they're there, they have to, when they get up, they have to get dressed quickly and have to get out the door. They have to remember to bring a key with them because they can't get through the door into the firehouse without having their key fob. So, if they forget the key fob, they have to go back for it. Um, so, it's those type of things that, that create a bigger delay for them, you know, going from that area and trying to get up the set of stairs and get into, um, the fire station, get down hallway, get on the apparatus bay.
So, it would be out the door, you'd need to open that door on the outside of where the trucks are to be able to get in. So, don't go up, don't go up the stairs and through. I'm talking, come out the room.
Yep.
Go where the food pantry is, that corridor, out that door and straight up the hill into your bay.
Yeah. And that, that'd be the same thing. They're still gonna need a key fob to get into the station and go that way. But then you factor in inclement weather, if it's snowing out, raining out, that type of thing where it becomes a slip and fall hazard for them or, you know, just if it's pouring rain out type of thing. Um, so, they're, they're all kind of the barriers to it and stuff where, you know, and, you know, and I hate to say it, but having the door entry is right there where you can quickly get to the pole, slide down, you're down on the apparatus floor within about 30 to 35 seconds. Um, and that's where the benefit comes in of getting out the door quickly. And it's not every call that that makes a difference, but some of the calls we have had with the, you know, house explosion and some of the building fires we've had, it has made a difference. You know, the one two weeks ago, you know, we were, we were probably within a minute of losing the house. Um, so, their quick response, it's like anything you delay from that, it's just, it's another layer that, that creates a barrier.
Yeah. And the week before that was the
The overdose, that's right.
Which was, we were seconds from losing the person.
Well, it's just nice to hear you say that. So, when someone says, well, wait, there's a room downstairs, why can't they go out the back door?
Yep.
Because?
Yep.
Okay.
And we are doing that space needs analysis as part of the facility study though to look at things like that that may be underutilized that we might be able to put to a better use. So, I think your point is well taken.
Yes.
Thinking about how we can better use the space here and in other buildings.
And we did, you know, I'm not sure if I had mentioned it previously to you, but we did in the plan, uh, uh, come up with a room to put, to move the, if you will, the weights and stuff out of the room down there to free that room up and stuff, just to move that up, just trying to consolidate things and free up other space.
Yeah. Cause I mean, if there's other things that you can do in that room where you said your folks don't really use it and Eric said that his folks don't use it, then you know what? Put a better use to it. It's great that you have the equipment, but if no one's using it, it's dead space.
Yep.
Make it useful. And you've got space up on the second floor. If you remove the items that are up there, boop, it goes up. And if you ever need them, boop, you can come back down.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
So, somehow we have to get from A to E to, uh, which one of those works because they all have slightly different flows to them. Um, and some of the document applies that the cost difference between all of them is not substantial.
Right.
Um, I think if we could get it down to the one you think works best for you.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, I think bring back to us that one.
Okay.
Uh, I think then we vote to, uh, say it's okay to move on, even though the money's already allocated, to go on to the, to make it shovel ready.
Okay.
Because again, I think that allows you to take it, to Assabet allows us to take it to other places.
Yep.
You know, family foundations that might want to make sure we have this stuff in this town.
Do you just use Assabet or do you use other vocational schools in the area?
Assabet is the only one that I'm aware of, but I'll defer now.
Yeah, I don't think Assabet's it.
Is it?
Wasn't there, isn't there a Worcester regional?
Uh, Worcester Tech.
Worcester, yeah.
Well, there's been a
Well, there used to be. I don't know if there still is.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if there were other tech schools that you could tap.
I'm meeting with the DE there in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
That's
Vocational, yeah, yeah, the Worcester Vocational, yeah.
But that's the one in our district.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm saying, but if everything aligns and you kind of put it out there and Worcester, again, making it up, says, we're ready to go on Friday and everything is there. Assabet says, how is eight months from now?
Right.
As much as you wanna.
Yep.
But that may make them giddy up to be like, hey.
Yep.
Yep.
Shift, so. Okay.
Okay. So, we'll figure out whether this is ready to put on another agenda
Yep.
Next week or whether
Yep.
Yeah, we're both back next week.
Yeah.
For a month of reports, so.
So, I think we should be, if we can get together, kind of go over the plans and come up with what's gonna work both for fire, police type of thing to come forward with that. And hopefully I'll have the answers from Dennis, from the architect to be able to give those to you as well.
All right. I can put that on.
Yeah. Yeah, work with Kristen and
Yep.
Good.
I'll talk with her Thursdays.
Awesome.
We'll be with Kristen tomorrow.
Sounds like a plan.
Radio failures.
Lovely. And I've heard nothing. I gotta reach out to Jake. I've, uh, heard nothing from Lawrence Trandt.
Jake from Super?
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, gentlemen. It's lovely to see you.
Thank you very much.
Stay safe. It's good to be seen.
Stay safe.
Thanks.
Do good things.
Now, you're next, I guess, Kristen?
I am. And I think my report is exceedingly boring and I have something more exciting to add from this weekend, um, that involves money, like in a good way.
Okay.
So, um, two really great things were announced at the Massachusetts Municipal Association's annual meeting, which is the statewide meeting mostly of local officials, town administrators, select board members, et cetera. Um, and they like to save all the goodies for announcing them at this meeting. So, um, we got a snapshot into the FY25 budget, which I figured was going to be absolutely dismal news. Um, I'm not entirely sure how they're going to do this, um, but I guess this is a case of, you know, we'll find out later where the cuts are coming from. Um, they are going to be recommending increasing unrestricted government aid by 3%. So, that's only amounts to about $7,000 for us because our government aid is about, was about 240 last year. So, it's not a huge increase, but it's not a decrease. So, I, I will take that. Um, they are also proposing to fully fund the fourth year of the Student Opportunity Act and boosting Chapter 70 aid by 4%. So, that's actually significantly helpful when we talk about the schools. But the most exciting part, uh, was something new called the Municipal Empowerment Act. This is a bill that the governor's office will be filing this week. Um, it's a package of municipal reforms and the idea is to, you know, kind of streamline things, help bring resources locally. And a couple, I wanted to share a couple of the highlights with you because there's some really good stuff in here for us locally. Um, there is a local option to increase hotel tax from 6 to 7% if we accept that. We can also increase meals tax from 75 point, sorry, 75 cents to 1% or 0.75% to 1% of the sales price of a meal. And they're adding a new 5% local option motor excise surcharge, which we get a significant amount of our revenue for motor vehicle excise tax. So, that's huge right there. Um, they're also going to propose creating a new property tax exemption for seniors, um, to allow cities and towns to adopt this, what they're calling a means-tested property tax exemption to, um, allow qualifying seniors to, more qualifying seniors to be able to get exemptions and to also increase the existing amount of exemptions that seniors are able to get. And then this is timely, they're establishing a new OPEB commission, do take a look at opportunities to address unfunded liabilities. Um, and they are addressing procurement. They are proposing to raise the 30B threshold from 50 to $100,000, which would be hugely helpful in terms of saving time. Procurement takes up a significant amount of my time. They're also going to clarify that cities and towns can award multiple contracts through an RFP process, um, which will be huge. And eliminating the requirement to publish notices and combines, which I have to tell you came from Ann Goby. Um, Ann Goby is the governor's new director of rural affairs and she has been holding listening sessions every week with rural communities. And that was the one thing people complained about the most, that the combine system is horrible to use. It's duplicative to the central register to file notices for procurement. There's just really no use for it. Um, people seem to really like this one. They're going to enforce double pole removal 90 days by giving municipalities enforcement authority with penalties for utility companies that fail to comply. So, those double poles that come up and they never get taken down, well, now we have some teeth.
We could give them a little something to work on.
I, I think a lot of communities could. So, the other piece that's really exciting is an additional 100 million for local road and bridge repairs on top of the Chapter 90 allocation and 24 million additionally just for rural communities. So, um, a lot of good things in there. Hopefully that bill will be filed this week. And just briefly in terms of my report, because I can't totally bypass it, um, we are working on a, um, I'm working with the Boylston Town Administrator to set up a joint budget group consisting of one representative from each community's select boards, FINCOMs, and the two town administrators to keep us on the same page when it comes to school budgets and try to make sure Boylston and Berlin, um, are going in the same direction. The FINCOM has selected Scott Schultz and Cliff Laporte. Um, and typically the chairs are serving of these committees, but we do need an alternate in case the chair is unable to attend a meeting. So, I wanted to ask how you wanted to handle that.
Well, would, who would like to be appointed as the
It's unofficial. It's a working group, so we don't have to do a vote. But if someone was interested in being, um, a backup, for all clamor at once.
I'm fine. I'm fine doing it. You know that I don't like spending money, so.
Yeah.
Is that all right with you, Scott?
I'm fine with that.
All right. So, that would be the backup.
Chris and Peg. Perfect.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Um, and then, um, we're talking about fall town meeting and the electronic voting on the agenda. I had the opportunity this weekend also to meet the new mayor of Marlborough, who has been in office for three weeks, Mayor Christian Dumais. And, um, he was great. The first thing he said is, we need to get together, talk about the Solomon Pond Mall. And I said, yes, we do. Um, and he actually reached out through our office and requested a meeting. So, I'm excited about that and looking forward to being able to continue those discussions. And, um, we are moving forward with the facility study, which I think Peg may talk a little bit about, so I don't want to steal your thunder. Um, and, uh, we prepared the contract. We're getting close. We're just waiting for the signed documents to come back so we can replace the tile and carpet in the public safety area here at the municipal offices.
Okay. For the voting devices, can you please change that to voting machine? Because when people see voting devices, I think they think
Oh, I think in the clickers.
Clickies, the little clickies?
Yep.
So, if you said voting machine, it would make
Sorry. I got devices stuck in my head, but yes, voting machines.
We're just cutting and pasting.
You got it. Yeah, we know, we're not buying those again.
Okay. The questions for Kristen?
Uh, not today.
Are those all your questions? Your stickies?
My stickies? Um, no, they can all wait till the end. There's nothing on here that I'll, I'll wait till we get down to our section.
Okay. Scott, anything?
No, I'm good.
All right. And I think I'm good too. I can't read all my scribbles. Um, okay, off the hook for the moment.
For now.
So, we did keep, um, FY25 budget on the agenda for old business. Is there anything we need to talk about?
So, this will be a standing item here going forward. And my goal is to have some items for you to vote on at the next meeting, um, on the 29th. I have had an opportunity to present our budgets before the FINCOM. And so, I think we can start with some of the smaller budgets that really haven't had too much change and also our budgets, um, in the office and get those moving forward at the next meeting. Um, but everything is going well at FINCOM. We're trucking along and they're doing a great job. We have two new members, as you know, who are very actively engaged and, um, really enjoying working with them.
Good. All right. Uh, moved on to new business and the date for potential fall special town meeting, which would be December 9th?
Yes. So, there are a number of items. Um, and one that comes to mind are a couple of planning board, CPA, and one that has been dogging me, which is the, um, earthworks bylaw that I've been trying desperately to get to. But I'm, you know, may not be ready for May, but we need to get ready for it as soon as possible. Um, I did speak with Tim Wheeler, um, and on planning board at CPA as well as Eloise, and it seemed to make the most sense, given how busy this fall is going to be, that we pick a fall town meeting date. If it is not needed, we can always cancel it. But the preferred date for the town clerk is December 9th at 7:30 if the board was amenable to setting that as a potential, lead potential date for a town meeting.
And the schools good with it?
Um, have not spoken to the schools about it yet. So, it wouldn't, oh, you mean just to use the, the facility itself?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that would be my next step. I can reach out to them.
Okay.
And how much does it cost for a special town meeting-ish?
Um, I have to look at the budget. I'm trying to think.
I thought it was a couple of, because you have to mail the agendas.
Yep.
Eloise has to have special hours, still have people register.
I would say it's
If, if there's gonna be a vote, right?
Less than five?
Yeah, I thought it was less than five. I thought it was two or three.
I was at like 35, I would say, all in with Eloise's time and everything. I think we're growing to the point with the number of items we have. I mean, I think I have 38 items on the draft articles for May town meeting. Now, they might not all go on May town meeting, but things that people have said to me, hey, put a placeholder on for this. We're, we're getting to that point where two meetings a year is not unreasonable and most communities do have it. I mean, one thing that could save costs is not mailing the warrants. That's a big part of it.
I think it is, but I, I still think that's an engagement thing for my standpoint. I like mailing them. Um, I, I'm not a big fan of a fall town meetings, um, but I, I, I don't think it's a harm to have a placeholder people can plan around because I think it also is more problematic to people say, well, there might or might not be, it might be in August, it might be in September. To have a date, I think puts us place. So, I'm fine with, uh, uh, voting to, to potentially hold a, a fall town meeting in December 9th, 2024 at 7:30.
Second.
Okay. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. You know, do you think that possibly you'd be able to discern from the list of 38 things which ones might wait until the, the fall town meeting?
Yes. So, that's, uh, the other thing is for, I forget, I keep forgetting we're having a meeting on the 29th. I started planning for the 5th. So, either on the 20, on the 29th or the 5th, I think it might have been the 5th, I'm coming to you with a draft list of articles. I think it's the 5th because we're giving a few more, a little more time for people to submit their articles since we just opened the warrant on the 12th.
Mm-hmm.
But what I can do is I can star things that might be a potential fall town meeting item on that list, if that works.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. If you, and if you get a chance, you know, after you do that, you could just email it to us?
Yep, I sure can.
Okay. And the next thing on our agenda is the food pantry lease.
This is a great example of no good deed goes unpunished. I was trying to do something I thought was very simple in formalizing a lease with the food pantry. It turned into something a bit more complicated because leases are subject to disposition and acquisition under procurement laws. So in a nutshell, the lease with the Berlin Family Food Pantry, which allows them to occupy their space here in Room 111, expires on January 22nd. One of the things we had to do was determine the value of the lease. And the good news is it is under $35,000, which is that threshold by which we'd have to put it out to bid. A five-year lease has been what was done in the past. So if the select board would like to move forward with a five-year lease, that value of that lease is $3,741.60 after all of the math is done out. So if the select board wishes to continue leasing the space to the food pantry for a dollar, in light of the entity's nonprofit status and the services that are provided to the community, and one could easily make the argument that by charging them $3,700, you're taking $3,700 away from services that they could provide. You have to declare the value of the lease in a vote and your intent to lease the space to the food pantry for a dollar. We then have to publish a notice, because any time town property is leased without a associated value, we have to let people know why we're not charging rent. And then, at the next meeting on the 29th, we can vote to enter into the lease, which would have an effective date of February 1st, '24 through January 30th of '29.
And I would assume that we would not kick them out for the eight days between the end of this lease and February 1st?
No, we would not. So again, it started this back in November with the hopes that, you know, this would all be wrapped up in a nice, neat little bow in time.
Is there a way we can put a renewal clause in it, like any other lease sort of has? That, you know, borrowing, no changes, it renews for annual periods?
I think you can.
Because I was bummed to say that, because I read the one you sent. That's clearly not in it. It just ends. But, you know, you rent an apartment, you lease a car. There's, they all tend to have clauses in them that say?
Would you like a five, like with an option to renew for five years?
Well, I would say, and after the five years, it renews annually on the date unless, you know, a 60-day notice given by either one of the two parties.
Let me ask town council, I think that's possible.
It also looked like there was relatively easy outs in it if we came to mutual agreement. Like, if they suddenly found a better space that was also a dollar, well, we would hold them to the dollar a year. I mean, it just?
Yeah, they don't actually pay it, so it's, yeah, it's considered paid.
Yep.
I mean, given the amount of families that that food pantry serves, there was an article in the Community Advocate at Westbro. Last year, they provided services for 159 people, 425 people. So they give them four bags of groceries to each family. It's a service that this town can't afford not to do, so.
I think it makes perfect sense. We just have to make sure we follow the process.
So I think I have a, I think the motion is, I acknowledge, to acknowledge the value of this, of the lease of being like $3,700, whatever nobody said.
Yep. $3,741.60.
Fine, taking whatever the first vote is we need to take to move this forward.
Okay. So the vote for D would be to, you're declaring the value of the lease at $3,741.60, and you intend to lease the space to the Berlin Family Food Pantry for $1.
Correct.
For the reason that it's the right thing to do.
Yes.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And we've got one more thing here. Whoop.
Yes.
Go ahead. The vote on $10,000 in ARPA funding for the electronic?
Voting machines. Machines.
Not the device.
Devices.
Machine. There you go.
All right. Because it's only going to be one, correct?
Correct.
Machine.
Machine. Electronic voting machine.
Okay.
Yes. So in your packet, in the file, I did kind of what I call the quick and dirty kind of breakdown of the two machines that were looked at, LHS and ESS, and what the costs were both annually, I'm sorry, upfront and ongoing annually. And it seems that the machine from LHS was the one that generally appeared to be preferred by the groups that had seen it. It's also significantly less expensive upfront. It's about $3,000 less expensive upfront. When it comes, so it would be $7,100 to purchase the machine. Then there are annual ongoing costs of $300 for the annual warranty. And then there is the cost of purchasing the ballots, which I'm estimating a little high, but we're at about 825, because Eloise says technically you need to have a ballot for every registered voter. That's really the way it's supposed to be done. And then there's a machine setup fee per election, of which there's a minimum charge of $575. And I looked at what the individual costs are. We're not going to go over $575. We're nowhere near it. It's more for like how many options you have. If you were a city and you had tons of different questions and options and choices, where our town election is relatively straightforward, so that will be small. So the total ongoing cost would be $1,700 per year that would need to be added to Eloise's election budget. However, given the fact that there is 120 days, I now figured out what the difference was. We missed the deadline for the fall state primary by about four days if we take this to town meeting. And then, there has to be 120 days notice given to the state in order to use it. And Eloise understandably does not want to roll this out for the presidential election, rather roll it out for something a bit smaller first, which I think makes sense. So my recommendation would be to put together $10,000 in ARPA money, which would fund the purchase of the machine, as well as the first year's costs. And then in FY '26, we would add that $1,700 annually to the budget.
Do we charge a stipend to the people who currently count ballots? Or is that all volunteer?
It's a mix, I believe. Mostly volunteer. Tim might be able to speak to that.
It's a mix, you're correct. The ballot counters themselves tend to be members of the community, but there are election officials who do receive a stipend that continue to work after the polls close.
Right, so that, and we currently have to pay someone to print the current paper ballots we use, correct? So it's currently a cost in Eloise's budget for both paper ballots and some costs to run the election.
Yes.
So it wouldn't be $1,700 more per year?
We can look at what the offset would be.
$16 million of town budget, the number's small. As we get to that point, I would like that, not just add $1,700 to our budget.
One other thing for your consideration is that Mass General Law does require us to have a detail officer present when votes are being handled. So by limiting that amount of time, that would be an additional offset to that $1,700.
Where would you, what line would you recommend that $10,000 come out of?
So my recommendation would be, we finished up the?
See, so that's why I'm wondering if we can have another column, maybe after we pick this out. So, you know, you could say, obviously, $3,000, it's dead. But where's their one? And I'm only going to pick it, just for an example, road engineering, 150. We've only spent $4,500. So looking at this, it looks like, ooh, we got a nice chunk of change, $145,000. But this column, there almost needs to be an additional column that says, "Still work in progress."
Oh, a fourth column, you mean?
Yeah, so that, when I look at this, I can see, ooh, we really have $145,000 of cash that we can do stuff with, or it's, oh crap, that's still being spent.
What would you suggest the name of the column be?
The one that? Status? So like finished?
No, I was going to say there should be an encumbered, which means you still have more to pay.
How about under contract or something like that?
Yeah, something like that, just so that we can see that, ooh.
Estimated.
That would be the encumbered, right?
Estimated toll would be a good number.
Yeah.
So the facilities study, for example, we budgeted $75,000. And the study came in at, it was either 57 or 59. But that also included an energy audit, which we're offsetting $18,000 from the adder fees. So I would actually recommend it come out of that line item.
Sure.
So you're saying Project Aid?
Yes, I moved that we take $10,000 out of Project Aid, the facilities study, and put it towards electronic voting machines.
Machine. Machine. Machine.
And the additional?
Right, to recover the purchase of the machine and the first year of operations.
So total, $10,000.
And then anything not expended, because that gives us a little bit to make sure we have enough to cover, and it'll just be for the annual. It would just flow back. Although, it's not free cash, so it would be ARPA. But, you know, we are allocating it, and hopefully, we could use that then for second year if we had a little bit left over, provided what the government, depending on what the government does with ARPA.
Yep.
Right. Get it under contract.
Right.
That's right.
All right, voting machine away.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second on the table. For those of us who want to vote in favor, say aye.
Aye. And shout out giant props to Tim at Coffee Talk. He got up and handled the majority of the questions on cost and what it was. And we, you know, Tim was kind enough to answer the question of, cha-ching, what number voter am I? Cha-ching, you're still going to be able to look right there and see that you're voter 312 in the town for that. So I appreciate everything that you've done for that.
Thank you guys for doing this. This is a really big deal. There's a lot of time and effort that goes into these elections. It's going to make life much easier for us.
Yeah.
Just get the materials ready, because people are going to start to freak.
Well, no longer we go to the election, Secretary of State's election live update. Look at like all of Wester County in, except for our town.
Berlin, not applicable.
Like, oh, look, Berlin's not in here. Oh, look, Berlin's not in here. Oh, look, Berlin's not in here.
Maybe we can get you home before sunrise.
Which only cares to like, you know, election geeks or refreshing every 30 seconds, trying to figure that out, but still.
No, and I forget, we talked a little bit about the, or a lot of Coffee Talk, but for those who didn't watch Coffee Talk, that is available online to get a more detailed understanding. But, you know, we're one of the very few communities that still does the hand counting. And hopefully, we will not have folks there for 22 to 24 hours anymore. And there is an option in case the machine goes down, which is important for people to know as well. So there's more information that Tim gave at the Coffee Talk.
Jim, we are not sacrificing the paper ballots. The physical written record of the vote still exists.
Right, because it's right, right. This is a tabulation device, not an electronic ballot.
It does not record votes.
Yep.
So when it goes down, it goes into a different slot. Machine comes back up, chugga, 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 chugga. And you can still have your picture taken with the old machine.
Yep.
Put your ballot in, go stand next.
You could make that a fundraiser somehow, huh?
There you go.
More of our retirement party.
All right. So we've got board questions on agendas and liaisons on updates.
Bye, Tom.
Bye-bye.
Actually, the last couple of conversations took care of some of the questions I had, so I will yield for now.
Go ahead. I don't think I have anything. I'm looking to see.
All right, mine aren't too many. So since we kicked off the hybrid meetings with conservation and Coffee Talk, are we going to move towards hybrid meetings? We, as this board?
I'm open to it. That's up to you all.
And, you know, tonight might have been a good time to do this, because then you wouldn't have to wear a mask. And Kristen wasn't feeling too good today. So we could have done a hybrid. I was thinking about that, you know, later this afternoon.
I think we need to. When we had Zoom meetings, our attendance was higher than it is when we don't do Zoom meetings.
Yep. So one thing we'd need to do, Ms. D, check, I would recommend we use 227. I think the layout's a little bit better in there. So we just have to make sure if we look a few months out in the calendar and see who else is booking Monday nights, and if we can get our names down on there, if that works. And then we could come in here for executive session, still make use of this room if need be.
Brittany and Roger did an awesome job. The first night for conservation was a little bumpy, but for our Coffee Talk, it just went right through, so.
We're finally there.
Props to you guys to do that.
I think if we start doing that, we could move some of our backdrop up there, too, to have the flags and the cane and other stuff. And that makes that a much more formal meeting room. It might need, this room could be used for other stuff in this building. This will be the deal ever there. We'll have four dormitories here for?
Absolutely.
And the showers, the showers will be in there.
No, it could be another meeting room that other teams could use, too.
Right. We'll leave the building assessment last. ARPA sheet, we're going to fix, so there's another column to see what we have left over. So during Coffee Talk, one of the residents asked about the paving schedule for the roads. Can we get that from Fred? And I know that it's not, again, I'm going to make another really bad pun, that it's not like cast and concrete on the roads. But I think folks are just specifically saying, my road's really crappy. Oh, it's 18 years old. What can we, what can we do?
Absolutely.
All right. I went to the SRO meeting tonight. I don't have them finished, because I didn't figure out how to do double-sided things. But Chief, I'm not even going to try with his last name, one's for Kristen, from Boylston, was there, Carol Costello. They did a presentation. Unfortunately, there were more members from Berlin Finance, Berlin Select Board, and Boylston Finance than there were parents there tonight, which, not my issue. But they presented some information. They do want it to happen this year, for that to be in the budget. I know that members from our finance committee spoke up and said the numbers on the piece of paper aren't really matching, because if you look at totals, it's somewhere between $180,000 and $200,000, $230,000 for the cost of this officer. But then again, it's only, you know, on a 10-month program, because you're in school. So there's still much information to be worked out on that. But there really wasn't a lot of public participation for that on something that could, if it passes, definitely impact. And the point was also made by our finance committee that if they're putting this on the budget, they need to take something off to balance it, that it's just not going to be an add, and add, and add, and add for that. So still much more work to be done on that.
Right, although, again, we have no say in how they spend their money. And so if they want to do a school resource officer, they can do that even if we cut their budget by millions, you know? That, I think it's up to the town, it says how much money you have, and the school decides how they end up spending it.
Yeah, okay. And then, one of the things we picked off, so the building assessment, the small committee met, lots of great discussion, I think. What we just need to do now is just bundle them up and get them out to the committees. There was a survey sheet that I had given to Kristen to review, because obviously, you want feedback back on that, but you want consistent feedback back. So, you know, Chris, you'd be like, "Yeah, great, yep, I agree." And Scott would be like, "No, no, no. Here's 18 points of blah, blah, blah." So if we could have that and then pick a date for the information to come back, I'm thinking a month, because I don't know how schedules, like how often boards meet. So you don't want to say two weeks, if they only meet every other week and we've missed a week. And then we figure out what to do is, there's a lot to unpack on all of those meetings, the buildings. Maybe, I don't know, maybe whatever's decided, if there's money left over in project, you know, 7, 8, 32, and we decide to do blah, 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 maybe there's some ARPA money that we can figure out. People were tossing around different ideas and proposals. And again, it was truly throw it at the wall and just see what sticks. Nothing was voted on, nothing was determined. It's, hey, can we, oh, that's a great idea. Well, could we? Yeah, hey, that's a great idea. You know, one of the items, Chief Mike had spoke about old, where are we? Old fire in Rudolph Building. Take them down and then have that area as another opportunity for fire and police to get out, you know, for that. So it was just those types of ideas of, hey, can we, can we do that? But I think this is where we need the other committees to start looking at them and go, oh, oh, oh. And come back with different options of, yep, we agree, this is what we should do, hey, what about? And then come up with a plan.
So I'm going to give our feedback, get the feedback incorporated into the reports with the couple of corrections, including the major cover correction, because I don't want to send it out with that.
I don't want to send it out too, but I mean, that's minor.
We'll have that. I know, but that's all we'll hear about. So I wanted just to make sure. That's why we had the smaller group first look at it. And then we'll get it out to everybody. And like you said, give them a month to get back.
So the drafts that were sent out in that zip file, there's sort of a file for each building. There's a master summary that goes with that too?
No, no, it is only a summary per building. And I mean, where it's...
I will then put something, what I want to see is a summary is list of buildings. So it had this beautiful sort of 15-year plan on how much it costs per building. I don't, I'd love to know like year one is X, year two is Y, year five to 10.
Oh, like a master spreadsheet?
So how much money would it take to fund everything in that thing over the next 20 years? What's that number?
Okay.
I mean, that, those numbers do exist in the reports. They're on one of the pages that has, like now, three to five, five to 10.
Building, not one that's all of them combined.
No, not all of them.
That's what I want to know. It's like to do everything to every building for the next 20 years is what?
Well, and there's another component to this, which is the space needs analysis. So I don't know if that's something they plan to do when they present everything. But can you outline a little bit like what you're looking for and I can ask if they can do it?
Yeah. Maybe I'll put together like a draft that shows the first two buildings and suggested columns and say, this is along the lines of what I'm looking for.
Perfect. We can ask if they can do that.
All righty. That was it.
That's it?
Well, she picked off a couple of them during the conversation, so, yeah.
ESP.
There's another, when Dee shows me how to do double-sided, there is the memorandum of understanding between Berlins-Boylston and the Boylston Police that I can give to you guys as well to read.
So this is just for Boylston Elementary in Toronto?
And there were concerns by parents that were raised about why Boylston Elementary needs them. And you're going to have a little first grader exposed to somebody walking around with a gun on their hip. And are you going to scare them? And, yeah, there just wasn't a lot of involvement. Boylston didn't understand why. We kind of sort of had one, Goody took offense that somebody called him a de facto school resource officer when we were talking about it. But, I mean, I left about quarter past six and there were still a couple of questions to be asked.
I think that was me. I didn't mean to offend him. I'll talk to him.
Yeah. But, you know, he tried to go through and explain what he does during the day for the folks in Boylston that really didn't understand what an SRO was and what Goody's position was and what he did and the time he spends. But as I said...
And why, why aren't we doing this by where the school is?
Well, I mean...
And the town it's in, then they need to...
Well, I mean, obviously, Boylston is probably going to front the majority.
We've never been invited as, our police department has never been invited to go to Toronto for anything.
Yeah, so I mean, there is...
Except when they need money.
Right, there is a breakdown of the cost that they'll go back and figure out what Berlins portion would be of it. But one of the things that was pointed out is they said, oh, well, you need $75,000 for a car. And one of our FinComs stood up and said, that's great, first year, your cars need to be replaced. Oh, well, yeah, that would be another line item on the budget. So again, it's, people are just starting to look at it and realize that it's, oh, you have uniform costs first year, but you also have uniform costs second year. Oh, you have training first year, oh, but you're going to need continual training. So it's one of those, here's the cost. Let's start pulling it apart and understand what the true breakdown is going to be between what Berlins is going to absorb because it's going to be at Toronto. The split that they're looking at is 75% of the time of the officer at Toronto, 25% at Boylston Elementary. And when the officer is not SRO-ing, they will go back to Boylston and be an officer there. So vacations and things like that, they'll be a Boyle, they'll turn back into like a Boylston prop.
Why is it that this SRO thing was only, is it just because we have Goody at Berlins Memorial?
It was...
No one included Berlins Memorial?
Supposedly the school committee raised it to Carol Costello and Chief John in Boylston. I can't say his last name. And then they kind of took it and ran with it. But because we have Goody...
All they have to do is pick someone over there and do it.
Police Department is, what, you could jog from the police department to the height, to the school if there was an issue, you know? Which also probably lowers the need, but...
Right, and unfortunately, there was a gentleman there who stood up, who was a former SRO and talked about active shooter. And I was waiting for it because the rebuttal was, but if you look at Ivaldi, the SRO did absolutely nothing for that, so you cannot use that to say...
We should say school resource officer. SRO also stands for single-room occupancy.
Oh, okay, SRO, student resource officer, sorry about that.
We probably should say that.
So, yeah, so there's a lot of, again, you don't want to call them scare tactics, but things that are going to grab an attention quickly. But then if you look at information, research that I had done talked about school resource officers in like a large city, that if you put a white officer in a school that is heavily populated with a non-white population, it doesn't work because there's not that trust. I don't think Berlins-Boylston has that issue, but...
Whether or not a full-time psychologist or social worker would actually cause problems more than... But it's also, the school can make the call, it's not, we have no say over what they do with their money, so...
And they had talked about that, that I think that there was, I forget the amount given, 780,000 of, or 78,000, I have to look at my notes, talked about they have guidance counselors. They have, you know, all these other services. But what bothered me was Toronto got new food service people. And the gentleman walked through the door and only happened to be stopped by the custodian and one of the teachers to say, who are you and what are you doing here? No badge, no identification. So that kind of raised questions for me that I wanted to say, well, what are you doing now? Who's checking the locks? Are they monitored? Do they have an alarm on them if they're jimmy'd open? If they're, I didn't, I didn't ask, it wasn't the time or the place. But I'm thinking, you just admitted you let somebody into the building, that you had no idea who they were. And if it wasn't for an observant janitor and/or teacher, that person would have just been roaming the halls of Toronto.
I mean, the office is right there. They should be the ones letting people in.
I don't know.
And that's always sort of, I think, been a problem.
I don't know, but I think that that is a discussion that needs to be had and had again with definitely more parent input. I saw it on the, on Facebook just this weekend about, hey, come, there's going to be a meeting. Nope, as I said, 10, 12 parents showed up. Maybe they'll all watch it on camera, I don't know, but can't ask questions. So, and the committees, some of the members of the school committee were there. I only recognized a couple of them. I don't know if all of Boylston was there or not. So more to come, I suppose. And there, one of the parents did have a little bit of sticker shock and said, are you putting it on this year's budget? And the answer was yes. So, more to come.
Well, do, I mean, is this something that, not this particular subject, but do you need more input from this board about the increase?
I need more information from the schools in terms of their budget first overall, which I'm still waiting for.
And again, we have no say over how they spend the money. We have a say on the total dollar amount.
That's right, and that's what I would have this discussion be about.
Because I can't remember, but I don't think the SRO, the school resource officer was in the above-level services budget that was presented. And that's on top of the 1.1 million above-level services.
Which again, goes back to, their numbers never make sense. Because here's everything we're adding, and then they have this giant meeting about something that's not on the list of things they're adding that does not exist right now. But they have no idea what it really costs because they've not dug into it. They just like, oh, this one person has a salary. Because like, as we hear from our officers, the day you hire to the day they're there is a year. You know, that what happens when they do their two or three weeks of training per year? What happens when they're sick? What happens when they're on vacation?
And those were some of the questions that were asked. So the total cost that they were looking at for the resource officer was anywhere between 180, 500,000 to 210 a year for that. And in terms of training, hi, I'm going to be out for three days. Oh, okay, Chris, you're going to be the backup, so if there's any issues, they're just going to call you. Okay, you know, so there isn't going to be like another person going. It's just going to be, hey, I'll call you if I need you type of thing.
Is that for BE at Berlins-Boylston Elementary and Toronto, that number, or is that just Toronto?
No, that was the total cost of the school resource officer.
And this, that's what amazes me is that, you know, when they plan something like this, why aren't they planning it for three schools? We're regionalized now. Are we considered to already have one?
Probably because they're saying that, yeah, Toronto has 75%. Boylston would have 25%. The district cost would be somewhere around 63,000, but there wasn't like any specific breakdown between, well, if they're at Toronto, 75% of the time, does that mean that Berlins automatically just gets half?
Well, we pay 30%.
We pay like 37% or something for Toronto.
I know, but I'm saying if, you know, they have the cost broken out by Toronto and Boylston Elementary.
This is a very poor plan. If you're a regionalized school district and you haven't thought about all three schools.
Yeah, yeah, so no, it's just Toronto and Boylston.
They are coming February 21st to the FinCom.
I have them on the, what's the, the 7th, plus I have them on the 21st on my calendar. And I was going to ask you which one it was.
Assebit is on the 14th and, hold on, well, now you're making me nervous. Let me make sure I have it correct on the...
And this was the particular meeting where I thought maybe it might be advantageous for all of us to go and listen.
I can talk to the FinCom about posting it as a double or a joint...
Well, I mean, we just have to post a meeting. I mean, it doesn't even have to be joint with the FinCom.
All right, I've got the document. They are, that's good, I'm glad I'm giving out wrong dates. They are on February 7th.
Yeah, for some reason.
Not the 21st, 24th, 21st is recreation seats, community preservation, and Board of Health.
You know, and I did notice on my town government, because I checked this today, that they don't have who they're meeting with on my town government for each meeting. Shouldn't they be doing that on my town government also? It's just kind of a plain old meeting, meeting to discuss budgets.
I mean, I, I, it's, I agree that their agenda should be detailed. It's not our responsibility though to tell them what to put on their agendas, really. That's, that's the tricky part, right? Because it's really up to them.
Well, we did talk about this previously, in previous years, about how we need to have more detailed agendas.
Are you talking about FinCom? Are you talking about the Select Board?
I'm talking about FinCom.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the school committee, not the Select Board.
No, 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 FinCom.
I thought they were putting who was presenting on there.
No.
No, it doesn't. It just says budgets, I think.
I think as it gets, okay, I'll talk to her because I thought we, once we had finalized the calendar, we had to make some changes that we were going to put that on there. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the school committee.
Sorry.
No, no, that's okay. I was like, I can tell them what to do.
I haven't looked at their agendas. Well, I have.
I can talk to the FinCom, yeah.
But they don't use my town government, I don't think, do they?
Yeah, they do. Yeah, they do.
Oh, they do?
Yep.
Oh.
Yep, it's there.
Yeah, no, I know they did for at least the last one because they had put times on. And I said, don't put times because then you can't, if someone shows up later early or you finish early, then you can't speak to the next person before that. So maybe she was doing it on an as-meeting basis. Let me talk to her about that.
I looked at, I looked at the 7th, I looked at the 14th, and I looked at the 21st because I was trying to figure out when the schools would be there.
Okay.
And they all had the same agenda.
Okay. I'll also reel this out to you.
I know that we get something, if you're signed up, my town government will send you the things.
Okay. Yeah, let me...
And I don't think those even had who was coming to each meeting.
Right, because they only will, they'll only send you that email if something is updated, so they posted it.
Right, I'll make sure that we get that, that updated, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I misheard.
I know, that's why I was confused. That's why I was confused about when they were coming. So, I mean, I will probably plan to be there if either one of you is going to be there, though we might have to post a meeting.
We just won't sit next to each other and talk. But I mean, I've been going to every, trying to go to every FinCom because I want to hear what the FinCom questions are. So I've been going.
Okay. All right, well, I think that I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
And seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.